I call to order this work session of the Hillsborough Police District Board of Directors. At five forty-five. Before we begin, we would like to provide some important information about interpretation services. Please remember to speak clearly and directly. Over one another so that interpreters can accurately convey your message. Thank you for your cooperation. Our first agenda item is proclamation. In your packet, you have the first list of proposed proclamations for the year. Would you like to discuss this list? No new additions at this time. Yeah, so this is the same one as last year.
Is there a reason we don't have proclamations for December? No?
Is it just that haven't been any in the years past or that we've had in December? So, no, there wasn't any reason in particular.
And then in December, do we have like a short? Do we only have a work session in December so we don't actually have a regular?
We do have a work session.
It's only a regular, okay.
I was reading through the list of the proclamations and noticing that there was nothing in December, and I'm wondering if we can add one for Special Education. There is a Special Education Day in December. December 2nd is apparently Special Education Day. Wonder if we can add a proclamation for that month for Special Ed.
Yes.
I like that idea too, and we'd probably do it in November. We kind of do them a month ahead, right? So, we would actually read it in November, but I like the idea.
Is that okay with you? Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's what we usually do is several years back, we propose reading it the month before so that we have to be ahead of time.
Back November.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is the discussion of the sample resolution on safe and welcoming. If you contain the sample language of the resolution, or if it's not, we'd like to bring it forward to read out the regular session in the future. Beth, would you like to provide some more insight before we?
I guess just the extent to which it's helpful. You know, we've been working on this for a while after having kind of seen some activity happening in other school districts and looking at sample resolutions and proclamations that were coming out of neighboring districts, not only in our county but across the state. And just kind of thinking about what, you know, what our purpose would be in doing something similar if we want to. If so, what was the purpose? What would we hope to accomplish? And ultimately, what we came up with, for comparative sake, like I think Eugene's was four pages long. And so, you know, when we were looking at what we might like to do, we already have so many things in place that we're doing to make sure that we keep our students safe and protected, our staff as well, of course, and to make sure that we're connecting families to resources as they need them. But sometimes it's also good to make an official statement about the things you're doing because people don't necessarily know that we do that. I know that, you know, boy, I had four kids. They all went to school. I went to school here, and so much of what we do, I just never had a clue about. So, you can never assume that people know all the things that we're doing in the district. So, this really attempted to take every structured view, starting at the federal government level and Supreme Court level, down to things in place in our state, and then the things that we do here at a local level in our own school district to ensure the safety and security of student information and make sure that when they're here, they're here to learn and, you know, acknowledging that we're here to keep them safe and that we want families to know that we do these things because we don't want them, out of potential fear, to maybe keep their kids out of school, which is something that was happening in districts around the country several years back. We were heightened concerns around it. And just not knowing what schools would do if they were put in that position of, you know, someone potentially asking for access to students or their families. That's the reasoning behind this. I think maybe, I didn't know if Audrey was going to follow up. I kind of maybe took her thunder and shared some of the things, but...
You know, we do a lot of training with our staff, our administrators, our office staff around this. We have provided a lot of information on our safe and welcoming school sites to support our families. We've done some work with our family outreach liaisons as well to help families know their rights and where they can access that information, just making sure we're providing that access to them. And I think it's just really important that we, this is not information we ask for or do we share, and our schools are restricted for who enters them and their reasons why. And I think to the bond, we have a lot of control over who gets come into our schools or not. And we work amazingly well with our school resource officers and our public safety team around any of this when questions do come up. And our office staff has, they know what they're supposed to do, and our school members as well.
Yep, so I read over this, and there are areas here that concern me. And I'm wondering about specifically with this, what, one, two, three, fourth one, we're talking about forcing in the sanctuary state and that we, that state has prohibited basically collaborating with ICE or Immigration Enforcement Agency. And that, to me, maybe I don't understand the legal wranglings of this, but this almost sounds like aiding and abetting. And I'm really concerned about how we're, what we're saying here. Especially when it comes to federal law versus state law, and that state has to yield to federal law. So, that's my concern.
I look, I, sorry, I can't see. I looked at that too, but here's the kicker for me that is kind of interesting. If you look very carefully at the language, and it says it's Immigration Enforcement without a judicial warrant. That is what makes me stop. Okay, so somebody's stopping. In other words, ICE can't show up without one. Somebody can't show up without one. You have to have a warrant. Same thing, if someone said they wanted to move your home, you have the right to say no, without one. So, I thought that the language for sanctuary said that out or without. I thought that they said, they said, I was thinking like you were thinking like, you can just say, no, we're not going to help you, but that's not exactly the case. In this case, what they're saying is, you can't, we're not going to help if you don't have one. In other words, if you're not legally cleared to be here, we are not going to help. That is what we should do. And so, I hope that helps to kind of explain what that really means because it does look as if we're going against federal law. We have access to information. However, they can't use what their warrant or without. That's where, that's unlawful, and that's what we should do.
And I think this is also similar in alignment to what the city of Hillsborough, also a sanctuary city and has the same language. And Washington County Sheriff also has spoken about, without a warrant, they're not going to give access to information. So, it's in line with our other local jurisdictions.
I think this, this whereas clause is just a statement of fact in that in some states with different political histories, local law enforcement enters into agreements to become essentially deputized from law voluntarily. In Oregon, the state legislature has passed a law, no local law enforcement can pass, so local law enforcement just can't enforce federal immigration law in Oregon just as a matter of current factual law. I think this is just stating the law as it exists in Oregon, which is that if federal immigration agents enforce federal immigration laws, if they want information from local government entities like our school resource officers, they would need to get a judicial warrant. But I don't think that particular part is us expressing an opinion. It's just a statement of what well-accepted law in Oregon is, that most everyone accepts.
I think my, and perhaps I need to do a little bit more reading on it, but I still see that with the federal law, it, to me, again, state law has to yield to federal law. And if there is, ICE has a detainer or whatever the situation is, that they are seeking a specific individual, it sounds like, correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like the state is protecting that individual versus saying, nope, he's here, he's in custody, or she's in custody, or whatever the case may be, and is not willing to turn that person over. That's my understanding. And so, that ties into my concern for what's being phrased here.
I think the difference there is the situation, as you described it, where they're looking for a specific person, probably would be one in which they had a judicial warrant that was leading them toward a specific person. I think where, and that would compel local law enforcement, or we as a district, to comply if there was a judicial warrant. But any kind of like sweeps, you hear about ICE sweeps that happen, where it's just like they're looking, they're trying to find basically undocumented people. That's the kind of thing where it's non-specific and, you know, it's not warrant-based. It's simply trying to find people who fit that category would be a situation where, A, I mean, I don't mean to speak on behalf of the state, but I believe that that's the, that's the kind of thing that the state is talking about. Like, you know, we're not going to have our police officers help you engage in some like sweep to try to find these people. If you have warrants and you have, you know, specific people you're trying to locate, you can comply with that. And, you know, just by matter of fact, we as a district don't ask for or maintain immigration information, so we don't know, and we couldn't, we couldn't comply with such a thing because it's not even information that we have.
I think it also relates to whether a local law enforcement group that's funded by, you know, the local citizens or by the state is going to use their resources on investigating certain laws. So, if a local law enforcement in Oregon, it's not legal for them to use their money and resources to get a complaint about a federal immigration law violation and go out and spend time investigating that. They would investigate other crimes. If they got a complaint about federal immigration matters, they would refer that to the federal immigration. Their job is to investigate. I don't want to debate the politics, I understand that it's a factual matter. I think it's been for, I think everyone on all sides accepts that that's what the current law is. Federal immigration authorities can do whatever they wish in the state in accordance with federal law. Mentioned states and local entities can do how they want to. Just time to spend their funding what they want.
When I moved to the city, my boy was a little bit arrogant. I had never lived in a city that they sanctuaries. It took me a while to understand what that really means. Not sure I really agree with it, but I understand what they're doing. And I understand that when you start putting parameters around it, like you, like anything else, then it makes sense. Okay, great, you can come and ask us for permission to take away somebody, but I'm going to ask you forward. If you don't have that, then you got to turn around and leave. Here you go, this is true. And with our school district and probably most of the immigration staff, that we don't have resources for anybody. Admittedly, this is another intersectionality between myself, my day job, and this job. We do have that. And I do, but yet I don't want my client, you know what I mean, being taken away. It's a hard situation, and I get it, you don't really feel comfortable with that. I understand. But this protects the law. We say that you love your client. You show up with warrants, yes, you have, here you go.
That's a good question, a different part of it. In the final resolve, all the other resolves are concentrating on what the district will do and says we encourage teachers to participate in training. I wonder how folks will go off phrasing that maybe in like HSD commits to making them training available or something, so they turn them on. What the district wishes our teachers would do this kind of thing. It's not a big issue, I'm just curious about that phrasing difference.
I agree with that. Commit early.
Yes, Mark?
Hey there, thanks. Yeah, for what it's worth, as an aside or whatever, this is the conversation that I think Yvette and I were hoping that the board would have. I don't feel comfortable making decisions for the entire board on many things without asking the entire board. So, you know, there were a couple of iterations of this when we worked on our agenda planning. Rose and Travis listened to what Yvette and I had to say, and, you know, it was basically, let's, this felt like it was in a good position, spot to bring it to the board for discussion. So, we're having the discussion that I hoped we'd have. And that's one of, you know, so because I've already had a chance to see this and make some comments on it before, I'm pretty comfortable with this particular version. I think it's, we're in sort of an unusual spot where, you know, resolving that we're going to do what we're already doing and what follows the law, like we always have been, seems unusual. But I also understand, like, we might be in a little bit of unusual times, and sometimes, you know, it's worth just saying, these are the things that we expect from each other, be it resolved, however you want to say it. We have these legal right, illegal expectations put on us as a school district, and just to basically enumerating them. But I, I don't feel, I don't personally feel a need for a lot of emotion in it or whatever. So, thank you for all the great discussion. We may not be done, everybody has a lot more to say probably. But like, this is, when Yvette and I talked to Travis and Rose about putting this on the agenda as an item, this is exactly what we hoped would happen. So, thank you guys all for that. And I'm very comfortable with where this particular sample language is right now.
Thanks, Mark. I think it was a good idea to bring this up. Also, just like you said, to reaffirm what we're already doing. I think, as you said, a lot of times our community or family doesn't, don't really know what we're doing all the time, and this is something that we were already doing. But it's also like, for us as a district, knowing what's happening around nationally and where people, and we have communities and families in our district that are undocumented and are going through these experiences, and they don't know what the district is legally able to do and not do. And that may create a fear that may keep children at home and not coming to school. And I want that to be very clear about where, again, what information we do keep and what we don't keep, and to, that just be transparent to our community. Thank you.
Yeah, and on the warrant front, like, it's the same as I would with anybody. Like, just the jur, like to Patrick's point, the jurisdictionality of the world, you don't ask the Hillsborough Police Department to enforce a state statute or whatever. So, that's really not our issue to decide or solve or whatever. We have legal requirements on us. And yeah, like, I don't really, no matter who showed up at the door of one of our schools, if they expected to come into our school and apprehend somebody, I would expect a warrant, no matter what the situation was.
You have a comment?
I'm wondering why we've never had one of these before. And like the statement says, this has been here since 1987, 77, something like that, 87? Why not? I mean, the time is obvious, and I'm just wondering if we're being truthful.
Some of the conversations we had at the agenda meeting, it was brought up to one of our committees. Correct, it was the, what?
We've been hearing questions from students and from parents and families about, excuse me, what is the district's stance on protecting children in schools in light of the possible actions of immigration? Nancy, curious, what is the obvious? You said despite the obvious, but I wonder what's obvious to the community?
Okay, so I'll wait back for my day job. And in my day job, we are currently concerned because we now have people calling in and saying, I don't want my benefits anymore because you might turn me in because I'm undocumented. Okay? So, we're trying to work on how we're going to prevent that from happening, which is the exact same thing that we're talking about right here. We don't want a child not coming to school because a parent is misinformed. What I'm thinking is maybe a more strategic education alert, information plan, whatever you want to call it, might be better than this. Because honestly, this doesn't mean anything, and I'm not sure this is going to make anybody feel bad. But if we simply tell these people what we do and what we don't do, maybe that's more effective. I just, I don't want another sample resolution. That's just another piece of paper that somebody else is not going to read. But it is important that we tell our majority minority district members that we will not do this, we will not do that. We do protect this, we do have this information for them to know exactly what we do. I just, on the inside, I feel like a more strategic communication plan would be much more effective than this.
I was going to say, but I think also like from ours, we have to set the tone leadership, and then I think you were going to do this and then create something to help disseminate the information.
Right. I mean, the point of, the point of pulling a resolution is to have that board action and kind of take it to the top of the pyramid and have it flow down. So, it's for our board to indicate that support. And then that kind of gives us a frame within which to work, you know? Some of it, you know, again, we have had these actions in the past. I think our whole Safe and Welcoming Schools website was created in the aftermath of a very large student sit-in that happened at Liberty High School in 2017. And it was because there was just so much fear, and it was all so new. And people were scared, they felt they couldn't focus on their schoolwork, you know? And it was, it was a pretty big deal. And I think back in those times, we were all just kind of, you know, trying to figure out, where are the protections under the law? Where, you know, where do we have the ability to kind of push back and just protect our students? And so, we put all these things together, and I think this come around, yeah, the desire is to be a little more proactive around, okay, what's changed since we kind of went through this the time before? What kind of direction does the board feel comfortable giving to staff to then, you know, go forth and do, so?
And it doesn't feel extremely unique to me. Like, I think we've done resolutions before that, be it resolved as a thing that Hillsborough Schools just gets said. So, like, I'm pretty comfortable with this, starting at the top. And yeah, to Nancy's point, it needs to be one-pronged and a multi-pronged communication strategy. But yeah, like, indicating that the board believes and holds the laws in these particular ways, I feel comfortable with that.
There's been a lot of conversation with different entities in our community. So, for example, Mark and I had, we went to a, I don't know, I don't know.
Washington County Legislative Assembly.
There we go. I was trying to figure out a title for it. That we participated a few weeks ago, I think it might have been actually last month, where we were invited to participate in a discussion and an educational experience through ACLU. And so, there was anybody you could possibly think of, Washington County, former councilors to, you know, Beaverton District Board members, and Forest Grove and Cornelius as well. And so, these things were brought up to our attention, and people were asking questions. Families or students who are worried, and what are you guys doing? How are you educating, you know, your teachers and admin and anybody who works at the district? And it was also a very educational experience for me because, like Beth said, this is something I know you, I didn't know you guys were already doing. And so, putting it into words and cementing that is important to also have. And so, that's where it's also coming from, you know? Everybody is having these conversations and asking us where we're at. When we were at that, you know, meeting, Beaverton had already done, I think, two resolutions on it, three drafts on it. So, they were already, you know, are taking on it and already taking action. And so, that's where it's all stemming from.
I did a poll of the districts in our area. Beaverton did their, is there, I believe, I believe Hillsborough did theirs last night. Sherwood Demographics didn't call for it, either did Forest Grove. And Portland is or was doing theirs very well. So, everyone around us has either addressed it or not.
So, everyone is trying to make a united effort to make sure our public community feels...
Fortunately, I didn't have to say that. And to answer your question, the obvious is the change in administration and the threat from the incoming state. It's not just the new thing, it's just the threat of what happens. That's why I was wondering, are we being, you know, there's a lot of things that people say and that they realize they can't do. That's like running for school board and saying, I'm going to, I'm going to reduce the children in the class. Well, congratulations, and I now know. Even though I want to, right? Even though I want to, I know now that I can't do that. So, I just, I just didn't know if we were, I don't know. So, that's what I was talking about when I said that. But thank you for the clarification because that tells me, the other question that I had was, what are all the others, they're already doing? I get it, okay.
And like, I think, best point of being proactive, I think somebody said about, sorry. I think somebody said about what's possible. Like, I am not a person who loves to borrow trouble from the future. So, like, I have concerns about what might happen, but I think every, that should happen to everybody every day. So, being proactive is different than, I think, what some of the other actions are. And for me, this was a good balance of, look, it starts at the top. We have these legal obligations, this is what we're going to do. And just a reminder to everybody that that's where we're at. So, that's part of why we thought we should bring it to y'all.
I appreciate the discussion tonight, and I appreciate the resolution coming forward. And I am fully supportive of a resolution such as this. I think it's great for us to have something for our district to take their hat on. And I personally know families and have known families who have been undocumented.
Dan?
Jan? I personally know, I personally know families who are undocumented or have been undocumented. And, um, they are constantly living in a state of fear. Um, not only is it a question of do we send this child to school or not, it's a question of do we sign up for free and reduce lunch? Because if I put my name on this form, where is this form going to go? Um, do I, you know, hold my child back from, um, participating in any activities or after-school programs or, or anything that our district, um, creates as an opportunity and wants it to be equitable? It's not distributed equitably, um, just because of misconception or, um, fear, as both have mentioned, in terms of, of, um, what they think this name is going to end up and what is the district going to do with that information? Uh, and so, I think that, you know, I'm, I'm encouraged that we have such a, um, a multifaceted approach in terms of providing that education for families. And I think that a resolution coming from the board level, um, will certainly aid in that, um, hoping to dismantle some of that fear. Um, and so, whether we wordsmith this a little bit more to make it, you know, a bit more something that we can all agree upon, um, I do think, or I am supportive of, of, um, putting for a resolution such as this. Um, and I think that that would, um, at least help the situation for, for many of our, our students and our families who, who live in this, I guess, constant state of fear, day in and day out.
So, Nancy got her, about answer, but, and I, along those lines, when I first read this a couple days ago, um, my impression was that, there are two things one that I'm clear. First of all, because, uh, incoming administration is considering more enforcement action and so, that may cause uncertainty about how, what, how, what the practices are, what the law is in, in our local area. It just can, the first part, it just restates existing law under Oregon law and how that interacts with other law, you know, how that affects practice. That's informational piece sort of, first part. And that's, it's understandable why people want that information on what exactly is Hillsborough School District's understanding of. And the second, the last two resolves are sort of policy decisions by the board and the majority of, we're not legally required to provide referrals on where undocumented students can learn about their legal rights or, uh, training on, to teachers on how they can help these citizens. I mean, it's those few things that, um, we understand we need to do. It's important, it's sort of a combination of mostly restating our understanding of the law so people just have a clear and unambiguous, it's what to expect. And there's a little bit, yeah, uh, there's some choices we're going to carefully leave our, our sense of law right.
Thank you. Question also, is this safe school, Safe and Welcoming Schools the same thing as... More safety? Okay, got it, got it.
You guys have a title that you like better, we can use that. We were just hoping to not make it too much of a lightning rod by saying it's a resolution on immigration. You know, it really is, goes a bit beyond that in our purpose in providing it. While obviously there are aspects of, you know, providing support and resources to undocumented families, but it's kind of broader than that. Also, kind of about the culture that we cultivate and the promises that we make to our community that when our kids are with us, we do everything we can to keep them safe and focused on learning, so.
And Nancy said resonated with me, which is, this can feel just like a piece of paper. And then what's the action plan? What, what are we actually doing? And I wanted to thank Rose for the homework. Rose did homework on what's the difference between a proclamation, which we do all the time, and a resolution? And Beth structured this really strategically with what Patrick was saying. This is a, kind of our understanding of the legal foundation. But then the, the therefore's and be it resolved are things that the board would be asking us as a staff to do. And so, we came tonight prepared to talk a little bit about what it is that we do and that you'd be asking us. Francesca and Audrey are the best to talk about what those things are. That what are the strategic things we do? Some of them seem obvious because they're just stated there. But, um, just to be clear, this is a resolution that would be the board voting to ask us as staff to do this for our students and families and staff. That's a little different than just a proclamation. And so, there is a plan behind this and I appreciate you calling that out. There's a difference between a statement and a plan. And so, if you'd like to hear about the plan, Francesca and Audrey have notes to share. If that would be of value to the conversation so that you feel like we're putting you in a position to be successful to ask us to do these things.
Yeah, I would like to hear a little bit more about what, how would this be felt for families and students?
Um, I think what we're really trying to do is just provide information and connect with our families through our PACs, through our tools, um, through our family outreach. We also, um, and just having, um, information. I think that is our bigger goal, so they understand factual information and what we have out there. And so, as questions come up, concerns come up, um, we can direct them to our Safe and Welcoming Schools, which is why I think we wanted to title it Safe and Welcoming Schools because that is what it is there for, it's there to support them. Um, we're, we have a brochure that we're creating, we have information, um, I think the word, the, the little red cards, they don't, they're little cards that just, they know their rights. What, what are their rights in this? And we're sharing that information in multiple languages to our families. Um, we're connecting with our partners through, um, Tyro and different networks that we have as well. We have the information that, um, we're cross-referencing information that we have as well. Um, back in 2017, it was a more of a heightened situation. We had a great list of, um, resources and connections to go to. Fran's team has been vetting that to make sure all of those still exist and who else can be added to that list as a resource for our families. And that's done often through, um, Olga's team as well. So, I think it's just making sure we have up-to-date current information, we're sharing accurate information, and, um, they know who they can go to in our schools when they need that information. And, and there's this great network of our families through our PACs and through different, that they are asking questions and it's getting the information, um, to them. So, we feel, um, really good about it. I think we're not being as reactive as maybe we had to have been in, in 2017 to have information that's there for our families. So, um, uh, we've informed councilors as well. All, all of the people that really interface with our families on a regular basis, um, have information. They're probably our most important humans in this world.
Will, will they, when we present this to the board and we have our vote and, um, have it out, will there be communication that the board passed this resolution?
That's my intention.
Okay, great.
Assuming that you all take action on it at the next board meeting.
Can you know, get more information, like, when that goes out, we link also our information again to push out, to just make sure we're getting everything out as much as possible too.
Um, to make it more local and immediate, I know we can compare ourselves to what our other districts are doing locally. Um, the day after the last election, we had an Educational Equity Advisory Committee meeting. And it was brought up by several members of our, that our community members in our community that this was a number one concern of theirs was immigration. We are not in the business as a school district to provide legal services, to sit and help them with, um, evacuation plans or safety plans. But it is in a way, an opportunity for us to provide a resource. And so, it's not like I, my directions have, our directions have been, you know, it's not like you're going to put something on blast and note and put it on your Facebook. But if family does come in and ask, "Do you have any resources?", we have those available. Two office managers, ed liaisons, family outreach liaisons, grad coaches, um, our PACs are, and it's not just our Latino PAC, we have many families, um, that identify in our Black Village that are immigrants from Africa that are coming in and they're equally concerned about what this is meaning for them. We've gone in front of office managers and registers, registrars. So, just to give you some background knowledge of everything in the communication plan that has taken place, um, since November, was preparing people for the inauguration, um, so that we have our, our resources. But there have been, um, many questions coming in from our people who are directly in buildings about, I, not that they want me to, they want to sit down with them, they're like, "Do you just have?", I got one call on the night of conferences, needed a Ukrainian immigration lawyer. Luckily, we were able to find one for a family that his child was going to turn 18, who is here of status, and we were able to get one before Thanksgiving. Just a resource, a name. It's, I'm not paying, I mean, we're not, district offices. You know, we're not paying for anything, but we can, we can give you a resource if you need to call. All of that information has been on the web, our, in, uh, district website. So, if you go to our district website, all the information that has been shared with them has been available on our website for quite some time.
And the relationship that we have with them makes it so that they feel more comfortable in our spaces already to ask for help or resources. So, great that we're capitalizing on that, I think.
Yes, Mark.
And, and yeah, there are suggestions. So, uh, for what it's worth, uh, Yvette, Travis, Rose and I wordsmithed this already, um, before we brought it to, to the board. So, uh, if there's changes people want to make, now's the time to probably do it. I think we'd be looking to pass or vote on the resolution next meeting. So, if we're, if we're, um, what? Delusional? Well?
Oh, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry.
We can hear you.
Weird notification on my phone. Um, so, yeah, it, it, now's the time to change anything we need to change or the people want to change. For what it's worth, yes, we, we've done quite a bit of wordsmithing before it got here. So, hopefully, people are fairly happy with where we're at.
...
I think a lot of the training looks like where, where they can find the resources, what they can do, kind of what, what Fran alluded to. We're not going to be able to do all the things for them, but we can connect them to where they can find those resources and make those available. I think, um, the reason why maybe we wouldn't say all teachers is we often utilize our family outreach liaisons, our principals and our councilors. Those are, those are typically the first humans that our families reach out to when they have concerns around this. We obviously, um, have shared information with our staff around it, but haven't necessarily done a full-blown training with all of our teachers and all of our classified staff. We really, we're targeting the ones that we know our families really connect to when they have concerns like this.
I'm going to thank Beth for, uh, and I think it's also important to acknowledge one of the reasons why we're doing this because, you know, everybody else in our community doing it. Um, it's important to acknowledge that we are the fourth largest district in the state of Oregon. Eyes are always on us. And also, the demographic we have in Hillsborough, not just Hillsborough, we're... For the reasons where we stand and, um, how many people have eyes on us?
I appreciate hearing that. Um, it's sad to hear we have to have, take that for granted. Um, sad that we have to forget we're working on all of this. And it's hard to do, it doesn't just stop. As Martha just said, there are people who look like me who are also undocumented, right? And it's just, it's, it's hard to tell. It really is.
Thank you for collaborating with us and, um, hopefully this is forward. Um, any other questions?
Thank you, Mark and Yvette, for working on this already. You guys did a, a big chunk of the work for us.
Okay. So, moving forward, um, moving along, we have, our next agenda item is, um, to discuss topics of interest for a joint work session with the city of Hillsborough. Um, yes. There is a pause. Well, we have technical issues.
You can review the list.
That's a good, a good place to do it.
It happened when Karen was in charge.
Is it the video feed that went away? Is that what happened?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, yes, I'm ready. Okay. Um, as a board priority, we have been meeting with our neighboring communities that make up Hillsborough School District. And now it's time for us to meet with the city of Hillsborough. That was one that we had pushed into the spring of 2025 because we were waiting for the newly elected council members and mayor, and that has just occurred. So, Rose and I have been in the works of, um, identifying a, a date. But in that, there is a list of potential topics that, um, us as a cabinet have discussed some of these with leadership of the Safe and Welcoming Act. So, I pulled some of those as potential topics. I also, you know, in review of tonight's meeting, knew that Safe and Welcoming Communities would also be something that would be brought up. That could be something, uh, just kind of in the direction of how you'd like to take that. That could be a discussion point, workforce trends, as we know that Hillsborough's a thriving force for advanced manufacturing and other, uh, healthcare. So, wherever you would like to kind of, um, go in this discussion, I'll be taking notes. And then we'll work behind the scenes to make sure that we have those topics also been identified with our city Hillsborough partnerships. I have a meeting coming up shortly for that. And get prepared to make sure that you're ready for that discussion. It will be scheduled for about an hour. There has been one in the past that was in person. We are proposing that we go to the city of Hillsborough and meet there at the Civic Center, um, about a scheduled hour of time. So, about four to maybe five topics at most of this list would also be the recommendation as well. So, I will just open up to discussion, take notes, help to be a bridge if I can.
My first question is, nobody's asked. My first question is, are any of these topics here more connected, um, with our strategic goals for HSD? Like, what of these topics have some either near things that we want to talk about that is connected to our strategic goals? That would be one thing to think about.
Yeah, I can, um, kind of take that first and me and my colleagues that they see some other pieces. I think, you know, definitely, uh, the connection of our strategic plan and how that connects to the 2035 plan and how we connect together and moving our community forward. I also think the workforce trends, as we know, there's some connection to our Korean College Poses and career tech ed, um, and also the post-secondary... to our Korean College of Business and career tech ed and also the post secondary and graduation sentiment outlining both four and five of our strategic plans of how do we start to prepare our students for those trends and then I also think of that's similar to health and education district you may have seen um in the news that you know block sixty seven now has a new developer and a new plan and so how does that work in partnership with what's already there and then in our work with block fifty six so again I think that the trends of supporting our students to the next step after high school and then long range planning I think is another one too that you know as we have a strategic plan the next four years but how do we also start to think about what the next four years will look like in that development and in that one as well what are some of the um either financial components of long range planning that we could also connect to something like a bond for example if that becomes something that we take action on so those were those are from kind of a cursory glance but I would say anyone else team though connected to the strategic plan?
Yeah.
Sharing facilities with the city of Hillsborough strategic plan goal and expanding how many students have access to extracurriculars and then the safe and welcoming communities update would have to do with that survey that we do with our students every year and um it's kind of I get to upstream to um middle school and high school to be choicing career path. Appreciate that, Erica.
Well it's just today I think I got an email if you haven't signed up there's a Hillsborough city Hillsborough newsletter and just updates and there was a like a voting of like ideas that came through the twenty thirty five and like for people to vote on their like top ideas and there was a there was one on education and one of the ideas of like support um adequate funding for K through P I was like great if the city could do that you know but they can't um but it was interesting that they you know that was an that was a lot of that's on the community's mind already as like one of their priorities the city obviously can't do that it's a state issue that we have going on but I got me thinking of like okay well then what what can we do within the realm of our partners and us?
Not paying attention to.
Speaking of advocacy I would say like you know they can support adequate funding they just can't provide adequate funding so we'd love to have their support um to Brooke's point like in an hour uh with greetings and all that introductions all that kind of stuff we're really four topics maybe pushing it and I wonder um how closely you've worked can you talk a little how closely you worked with whomever's planning on their side I don't want to suggest that we bring all the topics to the table so maybe it's like two topics from us and two topics from them if we think we can get to four unless you know there's clear overlap on something we want to talk about.
We will we'll bring that forth of um some suggested topics from council and then I think it would be nice to still get uh your top four and then that way we can just see what is also brought from council and it could be that there's such an alignment and overlap I'm I'm thinking that only because that is a lot of these identified on this list were the ones that were co-developed and created when we met with county city leadership last year in some of our conversations so I but we definitely can um ensure that we're asking an open invitation of who's the next topic as well.
Uh one of the well two uh two of the items are ballot measures uh Beth if we were to go for a bond what election would that be like would we consider that upcoming and we talk about that another time or is this are we here is it November twenty five is it November twenty six like what's our what would be our horizon there?
We've been uh looking at November of twenty six so that would probably mean that we need to pull together a kind of a development committee this fall and be working on it so that we're ready to actually file next summer in in advance of the vote.
So I put a vote in for that at least like uh maybe they have ballot measures that they need to talk about as well but I would you know at least make it known that the the district is in discussions internally at least about going out for another uh replacement bond definitely put it that way.
I agree with that I would just want to make sure that they know that we are looking at that specifically and strategically and might want to do it in November twenty six just so that they know and then um I'm I'm also really curious about what they what they term as long range planning for the community um just that's real vague of a margin for me and I just don't understand does that include this is that not include this is what does that mean or does that mean that we're going to bow down and we're doing something else that owns the ball?
If if that ends up being one of the things we do I think it'd be very broad high range we do have a long range planning committee that meets maybe quarterly and the city of Hillsborough sits in on that um so I think like the the meat potatoes of a long range plan discussion would take place in our long range planning joint committee as opposed to in like the high level just my thought would be like yeah that that'd be a little bit too much for this meeting.
Yeah.
Okay if there's another meeting we can get that information from that.
Yeah I agree I think that like we should discard the things where there might be another avenue to have a more longer conversation or in depth but like where does it make sense to have a leadership conversation between the council and the board around the direction that we're going in I think Hillsborough twenty thirty five and our HSD strategic plan is definitely a leadership conversation I think the shared facilities is going to be an issue that's going to come up with the Gordon favor or whatever it's called now that facility being created and then the issues that we have with that's the that's the those are the things that we get a lot of emails about not enough fields practices and this is a conversation between both of us that we need to have and I know I asked about us having access to the field before they went and did what they did so I want to have this conversation again about what's the promise to us about access to field because we're going to get those questions again as soon as spring starts and all the baseball begins um I think the other thing I would advocate for is workforce trends that's an area that they're very much in that space and we are partners and they're very interested in that so I think that's a topic that they would be really it would be great for us and then I think there's two things maybe the safe and welcoming that we just had discussion with them understanding where they're at and what are they doing around ensuring protecting our community we serve the same community so what are they also doing that might be something of interest and then I know you said four but for me I think the last one I kind of bubbles up is also the student partnerships like Yak this town and internships because we partner a lot with them on that as well but it has been a topic that I don't think we've touched on yet like how's it going how's that program working out for us and that so those are my two cents.
Yeah Brooke for your notes I would second most of that like I think uh shared fields would probably come up that may be on both of our lists uh Hillsborough twenty thirty five I like that student examples or student partnerships yes I do think we should bring up the bond I I think discussing workforce trends might be I think it's something we're all concerned about that feels like it would be a report from an expert to them and to us and I don't know that we that I would really want to just sit and listen to a report from them um but it is something we like it is something that's important to all of us I'm just saying like I don't know what problem we could solve or partnership we could discuss um so yeah I'm right there with basically what Erica was suggesting.
If we could have that list and then maybe prioritize what we think is important I think that honestly the shared the shared field is more important to me just because I know it's going to impact everybody.
Oh yeah.
Everything.
Right it's like it's like a lot of lofty topics we can discuss that feels like it's going to be nothing bullish right like.
Well I the question is how are they going to help right um because it's going to come on us all I'm saying is that we probably ought to prioritize that's what I would think.
Yeah like I think you're right yeah like like because I guess there was discussion about partnering with the city at Brown Middle School even for stuff so I mean like I think there's a lot of things on the table in that regard.
Yeah I these are the ones I've noticed so that's gotten from about five um I heard ballot measures a couple times the twenty thirty five draft plan shared facilities student partnerships self-stay and welcoming schools so those are the five and then and a report of workforce trends something that I heard that that might be something that later on either someone comes and shares that report um here or a liaison um gives that that report does that sound like I captured I know that some did not share anything yet so that's just though what I have gleaned from this conversation.
Yes because that's similar my list was similar to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay yeah so. We will go forward and bring this now one other piece I'd like you to see and kind of think about is um I noted in a early spring date and why I noted that on the um situation page is because Rose and I had were in conversations kind of this last five six days around what that could look like we we tentatively just actually this afternoon um heard back from the city that uh April would be a good time and you currently have a work session on the eighth of April it would align for us to go to the to the city council meeting on April first so that's something for consideration so a couple of things I'm going to bring this this list and we're going to discuss like how did you fill um in joint partnerships is there anything else the council like to discuss with you but also that we would be using our April eighth meeting something to consider because you'll have to vote on that to then move the work session ours to the first so that we're in alignment with the joint discussion so just think about that do you feel like um for us to start movement on at least kind of earmarking the first as a potential date for discussion?
If we have if we have an April first we should have items.
Like we wear we love Cornelius.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like an agenda item that's an April fool thing.
All right so we'll also work on that.
Yeah and the one time we did this the one time we did this before like I know we've had leadership from Cornelius come into our building and we've had leadership from North Plains come into our building and I appreciate that we have the opportunity to do that uh the one time we did it before with Hillsborough yeah we we met in their sort of work session room on their council night as well because I mean they have to call a meeting too and it worked pretty well where we did our joint meeting we stayed in their sort of work session room to do a little bit more of our work session business than they adjourned themselves into the main civic center auditorium for their regular meetings so I I don't know if that's something to target but uh my perspective was that that worked pretty well last time.
Okay so work on those things and bring this back to you so thank you so much.
Thank you and so our last item is to approve the annual clerk officer designations with Travis and Scott.
Thank you I just wanted thirty seconds to introduce Scott Harrison to everybody he's our new district financial officer and you've read his bio and Scott had a long and um successful career with Intel but I wanted you to know a couple of things about who he is as a person why I'm excited to join our team when we hire new position um in HSD we do interviews so I went around and interviewed a lot of folks and asked them what are we looking for in a new district financial officer and I take that information and work that into interview questions and then figure out who's the best person for this job and two things that um came out about Scott with his reference checks and with his answers to questions and interview process multiple interview process were two things first um folks would like to see a leader who can build capacity and bring people up in the system with their talents and develop those talents so that they can be leaders in whatever they're doing there's a lot of different functions in our business office and operations technology and um it turns out that um in Scott's career he went back to school to learn how to be um like an executive coach and actually has the um educational background and then the applied skills of having been a coach and mentor to many people in his career and he spoke to the fact that um what fills him up is watching other people flourish in the roles that they're in and watching them grow professionally and having those tough conversations about how do you find the thing that's holding you back and then how do you break through that barrier and become your best self and I really appreciated that about Scott's uh work ethic um as a professional the other thing that uh we asked for in this new position is um somebody who can modernize and digitize and streamline our processes and you know there are um we take pride in being a big enough system that we have a lot of resources but small enough that we have that kind of hometown feel and everybody knows each other there's some systems in HSD that could be updated that would make us more efficient and even more productive in terms of the the work that we do to support schools and kids and part of Scott's background is not only in finance and accounting um but in uh logistics and technology implementation um in the private sector and it excited some of us who talk a lot about how to digitize our systems and streamline and become more um businesslike in the way that we conduct our work especially here at the central office and taking work off the plate of office managers and principals and teachers so um I'm very excited that um Scott comes with that background and will be transitioning into um a school system um and making a difference here uh right away with his skills so also as a human being Scott is a humble person he's got a couple kids one still in school in Forest Grove but his students went through the Forest Grove school district that he's local and his wife serves at the Northwest Regional ESD as a special education administrator so has education in the family and um is looking forward to serving in HSD so I hope you get a chance to meet Scott and learn a little bit more about him and um thank you for taking this big job Scott.
Thank you for the kind words I couldn't be more excited to be here I I've gotten to briefly connect with some of you last week and tonight and I look forward to building relationships with all of you so thank you.
There is an agenda item here which is to approve Scott as a signator on um different responsibilities that were Michelle's and now will be Scott's so there is action to be taken I'll let Scott describe what that is.
Yeah so how Oregon sort of vests the financial officer to act on behalf of the district is through these number of titles and you as the board um are the ones that approved that designation um there's a lot of duties that come with these examples are just sort of managing the financial operations of the district uh entering into contracts on behalf of the district um future collective bargaining uh with the district custodian of funds cash management all those kinds of um core financial things um until you as a board approve that I don't have the appointment to do those things so what we're proposing uh here is that you um make you do approve that and what we're also proposing is we're leaving Michelle in place for now she and I've been working very closely together I talked to her several times a week there are a number of significant uh contracts and things like the finishing the bargaining negotiation that we don't want to just pull her out and stick me into that'd be disruptive to the operation so what we'll do is we'll continue to um move things over to me in the next probably four to six weeks she'll she's got obviously a new big job at Portland Public she'll um relinquish those things over and when we feel the the operation of the district won't be disrupted we'll just do those hands off those handoffs naturally eventually we'll probably come back to you and then ask you to remove her but for now um the proposal is to keep her in place and add me so that we can fulfill those financial functions on the on behalf of the district.
I'd like to make a motion.
I move that the board of directors approved the revised twenty twenty four twenty five designation.
Second. It has been moved by Director Lopez second by Director Thomas that the board of directors approved the revised twenty twenty four twenty five designation is there any further discussion? No? Rose, can we get a roll call for you?
She and Tim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Ashley McGuire.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Tony Ford.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye.
Yvette Moncho.
Aye. Motion carries. And that brings us to discussion time. We will go ahead and start with our.
Great. I don't know how long you worked at Intel, but having grown up on tales of Intel escapades for telling that you worked at Intel.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I've read through a lot of simple resolutions, and I'm glad to see that we've made our position on this matter during this year. It may not be the final resolution, it may not be the first stop, but it is worth a start for us, for us as a board to set an example. Lastly, this past few days, teachers and students at Liberty have been discussing Portland Public Schools new personal device policy. And all I want to say is that I hope the board remains as always thankful and mindful that we do not have the same obstacles in Portland.
I'm ready to welcome everybody, kind of a great winter holiday. And I just wanted to say, I just got back from a new advisory council.
Oh, yeah.
And I just thought it was funny, just the connections that were happening during the meeting. And I would just like to say on behalf of the advisory council, we are always, always, always very open to partnerships, especially with the Hillsboro School. There's a lot, a lot of projects going on right now in my subcommittee, the, we're actually doing this one called New Takeover. And it's with the, it's at the civil center.
Civic Center.
Thank you guys. Thank you. I apologize. But it's at the civic center and it's just going to be teaching, using the balance and stuff. Policy and kind of just how to be involved in that. So if there's anything that you guys would like to try to connect with for the advisory council or if you have any thoughts. And you, I thought you were good. I'm glad.
Nice to meet you. Yeah.
Have one more student.
Oh, wait. Yeah. I'm so sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm online. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Sorry.
So I want to say that I was very, very moved to see the resolution because as someone who I am, I don't have to worry about it, so I didn't think of it. But I have heard stuff both at Century and at HOA about it, and I really do appreciate that we're working towards making it really, really clear where we stand. Because kids are worried, not just the parents are worried for their kids, kids are worried too. And we spread rumors and we, we fear monger and we get afraid. And it's really good to have a solid statement made. Also, it's great to welcome a member from Intel because I have family from Intel and it's just really, really special to see because I know it's a, it's a really great place and I know that a lot of people who will work there are equipped to handle this type of job. And so I hoped you had a nice winter break. I'm really, really sorry I couldn't be there. I just got out of the shower and I got the text that was like, we're starting at 5:45. I was like, oh. So I'm online, but it was, it's great to see all virtually. I think I've run out of things to say, so I will pass on the torch.
Thank you. Big support from the Intel.
Yeah.
I totally appreciate the folks who put together the resolution that we looked at tonight. There was a lot of work. Yvette, thanks for looking at it. Yvette, thanks for sponsoring the conversation about an important issue in the community with folks online and folks in the room and all of us trying to figure out how to express ourselves. And this is, I was really hoping, Mark said, that we have a conversation as a board and as staff about what we're doing here. And because it's up to us to figure out to make kids feel safe in our schools and families that we serve feel safe. Thank you for that conversation. Also, we did do the legislative summit last Thursday. Thank you. And I feel like maybe a couple of weeks ago, districts were all over the place in terms of how to express our needs to our legislators. And I felt like it really came together last Thursday. Let's back the governor's proposal for an updated current service level calculation. And let's be really clear about the needs that students have and what resources we need to meet those needs, specifically in raising the special education cap from 11 to 15% and specifically in reimbursing districts for high cost disability. If you were to take 1136 and add $400 million to it, you'd get to about 118, and that's where HSD needs to be next year. So that clarity of that message and the conversation that happened in that room, I felt like really brought home the way we need to communicate for the next few months. And I look forward to joining forces with HEA and HDU, our board, COSA, administrators, superintendents that I talk to about this topic and getting our message straight and starting to really advocate for what schools need in the upcoming sessions. So thank you, board members. Thank you, Beth, for all the months of getting us to those three topic talking points. We've learned a lot along the way and I feel like we have a clear path ahead for advocacy, so thank you for that.
Thank you. I think we'll start with our board members. Mark already left, so we'll start with Erica.
Welcome, Scott, again. And I also hope that you continue to stay in touch with Michelle. I'm sure she's told you everything that there is to know and there's a lot, a lot more. But she's also been a very like vocal and integral part of these conversations at the state level and with other districts, so representing HSD. And I hope that you are able to do the same and just continue with that. That's really important because we are the fourth largest and so our needs are different sometimes. And I just want to maintain our needs upfront in those conversations as well. I hope everybody had a great holiday break or winter break. I'm so happy to meet everybody. And I don't really have anything like, great discussion today and board meeting.
Thank you. Monique?
More of the same, just to say welcome. It was nice to meet you the other night. Hope everyone, or some of you anyway, about winter, Christmas break and New Year's and Happy New Years to everyone and great to see everyone again.
You're welcome, Scott.
Thank you.
So first of all, I wanted to publicly apologize to the board. I have to say thank you to all of the A and I missed the section. I deeply apologize. But let, let it play its part. Two, thank you for raising the support for our community via the resolution. That is an important thing if we have the conversation that we're going to. This is the duty that is up to us to make. Erica, it should make us comfortable. We have to get comfortable with the discomfort of understanding that our nation, we have four nation college changes and we involve folks. I, I'm sad that we have to have a conversation, but yet I'm glad we're having a conversation. Let's do the resolution. Let's give the information out to our families that's really needed because they really need that hardly to do.
And finally, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've said this before, but I just recently read a news report last week about the district and disagreements on the board and how that's affected the work of their district. And so it's just such a pleasure and honor to serve with a board that's respectful and collegial and collaborative and that works well with our leadership team. It's such a thrill. So I don't take that for granted, but thank you for all, everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, and also, again, also like everybody else, thank you for working on this stuff and for us, and I, because you do not easy and we're looking forward to hearing today. So we have to reach out and chat. Welcome, Scott. It's you again. It was nice meeting you last week and welcome to the team. And thank you to the cabinet team for all the work that you do and the teams and answering my emails, things, Saida and Beth and Carol for education, certain things. And so I just wanted to say thank you. And with that, our work session has concluded.